I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, March 3rd, 2025. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall in Metcalf Square. It is available via Zoom and it is also being televised live via WCAT. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yeah.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petrie? Mr. Purinton?
Present.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Leonard, can you read me this?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Hi, yes, Suzanne Swill, Presy. I think there'll be other members of the committee will come and we can talk about 3.5 and 1.4. Very, very important that we pass this. But I thought I'd just kind of try to personalize this a bit because education has meant so much to be in my life. And my father, I'm sure you've heard this story because I tell it all the time, but he said there are three things you better do. One, don't buy anything, don't get involved in anything you can't afford. That includes getting married. Two, travel. You'll never understand the world unless you're out of where you live. It's really important. Three, get an education. No one can take that away from you. It will serve you well all your life. But education doesn't start when you go to college. Education starts when you're in preschool or first grade, and that's where you learn to love learning. And if you don't get it there, if you don't have teachers that care, and you can't have teachers that care with a class of 35, if you don't have a curriculum that works, you'll never see the value of curiosity and about learning things that are new. And we have such a great system, and we worked so hard on curriculum, and we worked so hard on getting to be where we are. And in the last five years, we have lost money every year from just a low level service budget. So we have to get back that evil. I mean, it's not only I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but I'm really preaching to those of you who listen on either on Zoom or listen later. It's so very important, and I'll be out there doing what I can, and I know you will too. But this will make a difference in our community. It's not just property. Once we start talking about money, sometimes it loses its real value. Property values, you're right. They do decline in schools, in places that school systems aren't good. Yes, kids do suffer when they're when they're not enthusiastic about learning, and they're not curious about learning because that's we all end up having to learn every day. So we start then. But if you don't start then, you probably won't start when you're 20. It's that comes as a value that you hold because of your parents hold it, you hold it, et cetera, et cetera. I'm hoping that we pass both a 3.5, the override, and we pass stabilization fund also included because that will make us whole and we'll continue the great work that we've already started. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne, very much.
Do we have any public comment on Zoom? May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain, listen here.
And any names? Motion passes. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve warrant SVW 25-15 in the amount of $260,927.31?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant, SVW 25-16 in the amount of $914,338.48?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Staying.
Mr. Matucci?
Staying.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Yes. We have a budget subcommittee report?
We met before our last meeting on February 10th, 5:00 in this room. Myself, Lane, and Jim, members of the committee, others in attendance, Karen, Travis, Lisa, Dylan, and Laurie. We discussed the timeline for the FY '26 budget, and Lisa is getting closer to finalizing. We'll have it submitted on time according to the town Travis timeline. The votes will take.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much for the update. Superintendent's report?
Yes. So I put, thank you, by the way, a little thrown off my mark, but keep going. So I put in front of you just some information that I wanted to share that really surfaced today as we've been working with the YES For Winthrop Kids Override Committee, as well as the Town Council, certainly having lots of communication too with the fire department as we look to, you know, work together and as a community to achieve what we really need to achieve, which is certainly a two and a half override and the override specifically for the FY '26 operational budget, and then the stabilization fund, which is being put into place hopefully when it passes to help stabilize the school district in the future and extend the amount of time that the two and a half override will give us in terms of additional funding. And then, of course, there is the fire station that folks are also going to be voting on. So we had a great meeting last week with the override committee. We had a lot more people come to that meeting. The override committee has been working very hard behind the scenes, which is sometimes hard that people don't see that. So there's lots of communication back and forth about their progress to me, which is great. And they're also really invested in getting accurate information from me. So what is put out to the public is actually coming directly from the school. So they have a Facebook page that's called YES For Winthrop Kids. It's a great page because the information that they are putting on there is factual information, and they do check that with me. So we've worked together to create messaging from the schools, working with the school's attorney too, to find out what it is that the school is able to provide for information and what we can use in terms of our school buildings. And so we're well aware of what our restrictions are as a school in terms of utilizing school resources, which is something that we cannot do. Fundraising is something that the school cannot do. But getting information out, clear information out to families, is definitely something we can do. Bigger push this time and much more, I would say collaborative work because people are talking more with the override committee and the PTOs, as well as the Winthrop Teachers Union. And so the principals will be putting out a message, and I gave you that message. They don't have it in their hands yet. It will be this week. And what it's doing is announcing that there is going to be very factual data, not influencing data, but factual information about the fact that there is an election. Yours is not in color because I'm skimping on Xerox, but mine is in color, and what will be on the website is incent parents will be in color, and that Saturday will be highlighted in red because that's a twist for people. People are used to voting on a Tuesday. This is a Saturday, so we're making sure that that's crystal clear. They'll be letting the parents know about the vote, how to register if they haven't registered already, how they can register with links to the town's website. Denise Quist has done a great job at providing information about how to register, how to get an absentee ballot, where this is a Saturday vote in April, which is the height of wedding season and certainly the beginning of spring youth athletics and co-curricular activities, as well as the beginnings of high school activities. So we wanted to make sure families and voters who don't have children in the school are aware that if you do have a wedding, you have the opportunity to do a mail-in vote. There won't be the traditional send out from the town side to ask you if you would like a mail-in vote. So usually they would send out in larger elections notification, and here you have to ask because this is a local election. So we're making sure people are aware of that. And also, we felt strongly that folks needed to see what the ballot looked like and what the questions were on the ballot. So that will be an attachment to the notice that the principals will send out, as well as a link to the frequently asked questions that the override committee worked on, and certainly gathered input from the members of the school committee who were attending those meetings and myself to make sure that those frequently asked questions were answered correctly so that anybody who wants to read them can. So I put the packet together for you so that you could see that we've also Laurie and I and some of our other folks that work with our English language learner families, we'll be meeting with them. We've done this in multiple languages. We can provide information that we any information that we are providing to parents, we can translate through our systems. So these are all documents that are not influential, but just factual. So I think Thursday night Laurie and I will be talking to the English Language Learner PAC families so that we can provide them with the same information in their language and to answer questions with the interpreters that we have available. We're working with Mr. Crombie to have a register to vote day at Winthrop High School that is being defined outside of my, you know, my direction, but under Matt's direction, working. He's going to work with Denise and do some education around what it is to vote and really get our kids kind of excited about that. We're not telling them how to vote, what to vote for, but we're just ramping it up a little bit at a different timeframe. Usually this is done earlier in the school year, but we'd like to do it now again so any of our students turning 18 can vote, and also to educate them on the process. So Denise does a great job with that. So that is the additional information. And then, in terms of my report.
Let me, Lisa, just on that, I want to, the website, there's, there's actually two, but there's a landing page that's easy to remember. It's investinwinthrop.com.
Yes.
That's investinwinthrop.com, and that has information both about the fire and the schools.
Yep. I think that's on my report in a second, but we'll go through it again. So again, we had that great meeting. So talked about the PTO. So a couple of the other things, talked about the LPAC and us meeting with our English language learner families. And another step that the school is taking along with some volunteers and certainly the override committee as well is we've provided information, which is very public information, about school events that we have, like athletic events. And tonight, there's a parent sports night so that the parents can come and student athletes for the spring get to hear all of the necessary information about MIAA rules and school rules. And so there's going to be information that's being provided to anybody who would like to take advantage of accessing the information. So there'll be a table providing information about the override. I did check with gotten several different responses from people from the AG's office, and sort of everybody walks on eggshells when you ask them, can I do this? And it's always, well, so anyway, I received some information from Paul Hodnett about some case law that does allow the school district to provide that information, working with something like the override committee or any other volunteer who wants to provide the information and be within the school or on the school's property as long as it's approved by the school itself. So if somebody from the override committee or a parent volunteer wanted to pass out the frequently asked questions, at first, we thought they had to be off of school property and couldn't encroach on school property, and that that's not the case, as long as we are offering, as long as we have the ability to offer that in an equitable manner to an opposing group. So if an, I don't know of an opposing group. I'm not looking for an opposing group. But if if somebody wanted to hand out frequently asked questions that were against the override, certainly they could approach the school as long as they were informational and not derogatory in nature or influencing in nature, they could create frequently asked questions against it. We would have to give them an equal opportunity, not necessarily the same day or time or event, but equity in terms of of practice. So so that was good information for us to be help the schools and the school committee and anyone else who's working on this to be more visible and and with our parents because we struggled with that a little bit with the first time we did the override and getting that information out. So that being said, another, I want to talk about the YESForWinthropKids.com is one platform on Facebook that people can look at and get information on. And then investinwinthrop.com has information about both the school's override and the debt exclusion for the fire station. The town's website and the town manager's blog will also have updated frequent frequently updated information. And then there's always me. So if you are someone in the community and you have a question, there is no question that is silly, no matter what you think. So if you have a question, you can email me, and if it's something I think you can easily access through frequently asked questions, I may turn you to the frequently asked questions, but I'm always up for further discussion, not necessarily up to debate whether or not the schools need an override because I'm the one that's managing the budget along with Dylan and my administration. And so we're coming forth and being transparent and honest, and we can share some of that information with anyone who wants. Our budget is on the school's website. There's links to it in the frequently asked questions. So all of that is easily accessible. On another note, as everybody knows how much I love the cameras and the media, this past Friday, I was actually very happy to do a WCAT video with former superintendent John Mosero and Eric Gaynor from former WCAT video maker. So John had had and I speak frequently. John's a retired superintendent now. He pops into schools every once in a while to do some work, but he's a wealth of knowledge, and he has the history of Winthrop, and he lives in our community. So I feel safe with him and trust him in his, you know, sharing information with me or offering me advice. And one of the things he offered was to, John's very much into videos and drama, and he's very good at all of that. And he said, would you, would you like to do a video just to talk about this override? Just, just you, at first, it was just the two of us, and then Eric, he snuck Eric in, which is fine. And he said, just to be, just to be honest, he said, just to sit down and to be able to have a conversation, not a scripted, you know, read questions, I'll ask you questions, and you give me these answers. It was just a conversation. And I'm going to tell you, it was, it was fun. It was fun to be able to sit there and share information without having to look at anything, without having to think about it, and to just be honest about us. So it's not something that you're going to hear lots of heavy duty buzzwords. It's not something that you're going to see me referring you to tables and charts and graphs. It's just a candid conversation. I think some of the key points that we emphasized was the continued potential of, you know, being 3.5 million in the hole to open up the FY '26 school year. That's what we predicted this past June when we started talking about an override for November. As I continue to create the FY '26 budget, we're still pretty close to that. Things change. We get teachers who leave and come in at a lesser salary. Other things change. We have students who weren't in out-of-district placements that move in and go to out-of-district placements. And then you have, we talk about the things you can't control, you know, the everlasting healthcare benefits and transportation costs that we have zero control over. So some of the other key points were, we talked a lot about the drivers of the annual costs, you know, in a budget, and those are things that have risen over two and a half percent, you know, over the past, you know, couple of years, but certainly last year and going into next year. The rising premiums for healthcare, I talked about special education and athletic transportation, taking our students to their athletic and co-curricular events has become quite costly. The cost of special education, vocational and charter school tuitions, they have risen dramatically and certainly well over two and a half percent in the past several years. And we've had less revenue coming in from grants because all of the ESAR funds that we used, certainly, we talked about that, that those were a one-time funding source. And then the exhaustion, we talked about of the outside revolving accounts and revenue sources that we had. And we've talked about that now for a year and a half because as we went into FY '25, it was very transparent that we were doing everything we could not to to cut as much as we needed to cut. And we did lose two teachers, and we did have to prepay 1.4 million dollars in materials and supplies. And some of that, those materials and supplies were covered by by outside revenue accounts that have now dwindled down. So we did talk about that. And just that, you know, all of these key drivers have not allowed the two and a half percent levy that we have every year to keep pace with the cost of public education. So we went from, you know, how did we get here? So we talked a lot about that, which I gave the whole history of how we got here, which is similar to what I just explained to you. And, you know, why, why are we in this position, and what are we going to do to get out of it? And that's where we started talking about the operational override, to have a level service to open the school year, and then the fiscal responsibility of needing to create an account that would help us not have to come back to the community next year for another override. And that's the, that's the stabilization account. So we did get into a little bit of a discussion. There was a meeting about the fire station prior to that. So John had a long night, and Jim was at that. And we talked a lot about what happens if it doesn't pass and the impact of that. So we all know what the impact is. The impact is we'll have a reduction in in service to kids. We'll have a reduction in what we can purchase for kids. We'll have increases in fees. I mean, we have to make up approximately 3.5 million dollars. The part that's hurt that really hurts, I think, the most as a community member, someone who lives here and somebody who manages this budget, is the thought that the organization that I run and am responsible to oversee has mandatory things that have to happen that we can't just say no to. We're just not allowed to. And when that happens, and you don't have enough money to even do that, then the town has to figure out a way to plug that hole. And the only way to plug that hole is to take away from other departments, the same departments that we need to exist every day, the police, the fire, the DPW. We had the fire department at our Gorman Fort Bank School today to take a teacher by ambulance, emergency, to the hospital who was having a terrible reaction to something. And and when I say it hurts, it hurts because you're sort of the organization that's going to be looked at as reducing the services on the other side of the town, and it just shouldn't be that way. So it was a little, it got a little emotional, you know, during that time because it's hard to tell people that. It's hard, it's hard to say, you know, this is what could happen, and we don't want that to happen. And that's why we're in agreement that we need an override, and we need to have more money coming to the schools from the taxpayers versus taking it from the other departments. So I think it was a good meeting. I hope people watch it. I'm waiting to get the link. The goal is to to put that link up. I'll have Patty put it on Facebook. And you guys know I don't really love to do cameras, but I felt like this was a good, honest, sort of just comfortable conversation that if you, if you watch it, I might have got the hives a couple of times, but I don't think so. But it was, it was real kind of just honest discussion that you really couldn't make up. You know, you weren't, wasn't reading from anything. It was just the truth coming out. So I hope people do watch it. I hope they see that the school department and the fight as working with the fire department and the fire department working with the school department to support each other is a true testament to investing in our community as a whole. You know, the town's revenue is one amount of money that has to care for the entire town. And it's just one part of money. And, you know, it's, it's hard to think that somebody is going to lose out in the end if we don't pass an override. So I encourage people to do their due diligence, educate yourself about both the police, sorry, the police, the fire station and the school department. And don't just listen to the talk in the various venues that people hang out in and believe what other people say. If you're going to go down and take the time to go down and vote, do yourself a favor and give yourself the respect of being educated. And if you don't know how to get educated, 617-846-5500, extension 7111. And I will spend an inordinate amount of time with anybody to help them. So that's my superintendent report for for today. I do think we have a lot going on in the schools, but I think that this is primary right now. The next, you know, three and a half weeks, you know, our future depends on it. So thank you for listening.
Any questions?
Oh, I left out one thing. I would like to have, I left out the part about working and presenting the budget to you guys pretty soon. So let me just add that. So along with the leadership, I have completed multiple drafts of the budget of budgets, but the level service budget is ready for a subcommittee to review. So the way that I put the budget calendar or just an updated one in your packet, I looked at the past five years of budget calendars because things start to blend after a while, and I wanted to make sure that we were following the timelines that we're supposed to follow. And so I think it's time to have the budget subcommittee take a look at the level service budget and understand it. We had a subcommittee prior to this, but now I can put a physical document in your hand that you're able to go through. And if we can, so I'd like to post that for March 10th. Patty will put something out just to check people's availability, and I'll present that to the subcommittee, which will then allow us in our March 17th meeting for the subcommittee to to come back and report on that to the full committee. There doesn't need to be a vote at that point because we have other steps that we need to take. We have to post a version of that budget in the newspaper and then offer the community the option to come out to a public meeting to ask questions or to give input on the budget. And if I play my dates right, we could get that into the newspaper at the beginning of April and on the school's website, and then at our April 14th meeting, which is pretty much in line with what we've been doing in the past, hold that public meeting. And then the committee has time to digest after hearing from the public, asking me questions, and getting feedback. That gives people time to kind of process all of that. And then we have another meeting at the end of April, on April 28th, I believe it is. And that would be the meeting that the pub that the school committee could, after any other meetings that you want to put in, if there's questions and you want to have other subcommittee meetings, we can do that. But I envision on April 28th that the committee would be able to vote that budget. And again, that budget, we've had a lot of talk about a needs-based budget. The needs-based budget is everything we've asked for the last 10 years that we haven't gotten on top of this year's level service budget. It's an inordinate amount of work because I've also had to create the what-if budget. So what if the override does not pass? So that is in process. That takes time because it's, it's not as easy as people think when you start to look at cutting staff. There's a whole bunch of factors that go into that in terms of teacher seniority, bumping rights, and how how that appears. My hope is I don't have to press the button and hit that icon on my computer that says, you know, the what-if budget, and it's what if I have to cut, you know, upwards of 3.5 million. And so that work is being done. It's very dangerous to publicize that because teachers will will panic, and I don't blame them. I'm hoping with this vote on April 5th that we're all able to take a breath on April 6th and that we can be ready to get that budget back before you. And once we determine how much money we have, we can always tweak that budget again before June 30th. So Patty will will get the date out to folks for the next budget subcommittee meeting, just to check people's availability first.
Okay. Now, are there any questions? Okay, hearing then. Homeschool applications, do we have any?
Not.
And that brings us to personnel.
That brings us to personnel. So no appointments or new hires. We had the resignation of Nicholas Bashir. He was our human resource generalist slash manager. Nick worked with us for four years?
Four years.
Four years. Nick was a former student at Winthrop Public Schools, came back after graduating from Bridgewater State University and got his, his feet wet working here in human resource, working closely with me. He probably would prefer not to do it so closely, but he learned a lot. And Nick is moving on to a job at the state level, which, you know, gives him some more stability. He probably sees the writing on the wall. He probably sees the writing on the wall in the what-if budget. So, we wish him luck and he actually started, I believe, today in that new position. We have no new retirements that I'm aware of in the postings. A long-term, we have a custodian opening. We have a long-term substitute science teacher for maternity leave and a long-term substitute special education paraprofessional at the Cummings School.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Under new business, may I have a motion to vote on the 2025, to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar as it has been presented to us?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion?
Which calendar are you looking at?
As a motion for one.
Uh, I will let our superintendent clarify that.
So, I got people texting me about the Zoom bomb that they are not too thrilled on. I agree. Laurie, I might have to have you take it because you were on the calendar. I think they, we were looking at.
I'm just pulling them up here.
Yeah, we just have to pull them up. Been a while since we looked at them.
Yeah, so there's two versions that you have there.
Let me just pull mine up. Do we put them in here? We add them in?
They have them in.
Oh, here it is. Yes. So, the first one, one is two weeks, sorry.
Yes. So, the first one has us, both of them have us starting on Monday, the 25th for teachers. They would be, teachers would come the 25th and 26th, students would come Wednesday and Thursday, 27th and 28th. And like we've done in the past years, have the Friday and the Monday of the Labor Day weekend off. The difference in the two calendars is the holiday break during December. One of them has us going the full, has us going the full two weeks basically off. So, the 24th falls on a Wednesday. So, option one, calendar one, has us off from the 22nd through January.
First.
Yeah, come back on the 2nd.
Come back on the 5th.
No, come back on the 5th, actually.
Oh, yeah, because.
It's a full two weeks. The other has us going to school a full day on the Monday, the 22nd and having a half day on Tuesday, the 23rd. And then still coming back on the 5th. The difference, the real difference is the last day of school would be the 11th on the second calendar. On the first calendar, it pushes it to the following week, which is the 15th.
Which is a Monday.
Which is a Monday. And if we have any snow days, it could push us farther, especially because you can't go to school right now on the 19th for Juneteenth. So, it would only give us the leeway of like three school, three snow days if that was the case.
And then coming back again the following.
And then we'd be kicked into the last week of June if that was the case. So.
So, I think, and just so you can hear how the principals and how Laurie and I have discussed it, I mean, there's two thoughts. If I ask my son, he's going to say, give me the two weeks, I'm psyched because they don't think really about June. I think the longer you go in June, you know, when you're trying to get your, the bulk of your learning and the attention of students and whatnot is, you know, it's prior to June.
Right.
Come June, we're all.
MCAS is all done.
MCAS is done.
Wrapping up early.
Yeah, we've got a lot of sillies going on, we're itching to get out, it's hot. The nice thing about having the two weeks is it's two weeks. I don't agree that we save a lot on heat and electricity. You might save a little. You know, again, that whole like learning, you know, being front-loaded is helpful. But honestly, we haven't had the two weeks at Christmas in a long time, not since I've been here, I don't think. So, I don't have a major league preference.
Okay. For the purpose of discussion, let me ask for a motion to approve with the end date on the 11th, which would not give you the full two weeks.
That's not the one that I was looking at.
Okay.
That was the one that gave you two weeks.
Give you the two weeks. Is that option one?
That's option.
Option one.
Option one gives you two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, option one gives you two weeks.
Okay, so we are, then we are discussing the option with two weeks.
Option one.
Yes. Discussion.
Remember, we had this discussion a year ago and Julie Berry actually raised a really good point about working parents. To have that kind of two-week break, it's very rare for a parent to have that kind of time off. I think it really penalizes, again, working parents. And I think we also talked a little bit about food insecurity with our students. So, and finally, I think your point is well-taken about going into June. I feel pretty strongly that we should do option number two.
Would you like to propose an amendment?
While we're still discussing this?
Oh, I'm sorry, go.
Well, I would just like to say I prefer option one with Gus's, Gus's motion. Again, we're talking here about an override. We're talking here about how desperately, if things don't go the way we should be looking, I don't care if it's a dollar fifty cents, we should be looking to save every nickel and dime we can. We're talking about a day and a half difference. If we have two snow days, it goes into the following week. You know, again, I'd even look at PD. How much money will we potentially have for PD? Could we have one day at the beginning and start on the 26th? I don't know. You know, the funding's going potentially could be such a disaster that I think we should be looking to save every dime we possibly can. I also think it is, regardless, it's 180 days, so parents are having the same amount of days to worry about whether it be all at once or on different days. I just think it would be reckless of us to not look at any opportunity to save money and I think the two weeks overall, for the vast majority of people, is a welcome break. So, I would strongly support option one.
I feel like two days during the week of Christmas or two days in June are equal in terms of kids not being with their head in the game. So, I, yeah, I don't know, six of one, one half dozen of the other, but I do feel the challenge of being a working mom and having to find two, two weeks of childcare or at least a friend.
And I guess my question is, how much money are we really saving?
If it's a dollar, it's better, potentially. You know how bad things could be? We've just gone over this for 15 minutes of public comment.
I'm very aware of that, Jim, but I'm asking a real question, which is where do you anticipate these savings coming in?
Well.
The heat for two days, is that what we're talking about?
Well, you're looking at heat in two days in the middle of the winter, I guess, in the long weekend from the following Friday. How much? I don't know. I'd be, you know, it's not substantial money, but it's money. And I mean, if we're looking, you know, we're looking at increasing user fees, we're looking at eliminating youth sports. And I'm not saying this is going to bring it back, but I mean, we have to be showing an effort here. We have to be putting some skin in the game as well. We're asking people because we're in a desperate situation right now. We're not making up numbers. The funds, the budget is poor, potentially incredibly poor, to say the least. We're asking people to step up. I think we should do the same.
Well, I do worry that the, you're thinking that people are going to see us as offering two weeks in Christmas time as a good thing. I think people are going to take it as hardship. And if the idea is to cultivate goodwill with the community, which we desperately need in order for them to pass the override, I think about the school calendar that is sensitive to needs of students, working parents and the educational initiative in general would cultivate more goodwill than the same. I don't think that the public is going to read a two-week break on Christmas as us belt-tightening in any significant way. It seems to me we're simply passing along yet another hardship to them when we're already offering or asking them to take on a hardship, which is to pay additional money. I just don't read it the same way.
Jim?
Yes.
So, with my past school committee, like, we did this. And we had four buildings at the time with the middle school. And we estimated the savings at 10,000 for the two weeks. Now, we have less ability, we're more efficient, but I think costs have gone up on the supply. Obviously, we all know about gas and electricity, it's higher. I'm not sure what the numbers are now. I'm assuming it's going to be close to what it was then. So, I know it's two weeks, we're going to be taking off whatever it is, seven days or six days, we're going to be out. It may be a couple of thousand bucks that you might save. It's not, it's not a lot of money.
On the flip side, don't you have to provide AC if you go later in June too? Isn't it kind of like?
Yeah, but that's.
And electricity?
It's electricity. Electricity's cheaper than gas right now. Gas is very average.
Yeah, but it's just like the wash. It's like a couple thousand bucks.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that. Like I said, we did that purposely to save that money for two weeks because it was substantial.
I got a question for Gus. Was that, you said 10,000. Is that total for the two weeks or was that per day?
It's total for the two. Okay.
With no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
A roll call?
Yep.
Ms. Leonard?
Sorry, this is option one we're talking about with the two weeks.
Option one, that's the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
No. Mr. LaTerry?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Pirington?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Abstain.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Then, may I have a motion to vote to approve the school committee meeting dates for 25, 28, 29?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion?
I just have one discussion on the option one, where the school's going to be off potential for three weeks. So, you're going to have a school committee meeting on December 29th, which it'll be in the middle of vacation.
I'm still here. I'll still be here.
Hey, I'd be happy to be.
We can always change those. There's also two dates on there for July and traditionally we've had one meeting in July. We added another date because typically we need to have the warrant done.
And I do think that could be incredibly important. Again, we're being proactive, knowing the urgency we might have in July and August. So, like you said, you could change them. I'm just, you know, the December one stuck out saying.
Yeah, so we'll, I mean, we can wrap back around on that and see where we're at, you know, come, come April 6th, see where we're at. But they can always be added or you've seen, we've adjusted a couple of them in the past, you know, making sure we can get a quorum and if we have to sneak, sneak one in for our budget, you know, review or something like that. Just want to have a basis so that we could start to think about where we're going to be at when we come back. Can't believe it's already March.
Any further discussion? Hearing them may have a roll call.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. LaTerry?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Pirington?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
I have under new business a budget update, but I believe you've already given us that. I have. Okay. Then I also would like to add under new business a proposed letter from the committee to, for the, to be published in the Winter Transcript. This would be a letter that would be coming from us officially and it would be signed by us with our names listed individually. May I have a motion to consider this letter?
Motion.
Second. Wish my Ms. Barry, second by Ms. LaTerry. I'm sorry. Ms. Leonard, I was looking at Mr. LaTerry. May I? Any discussion?
Yes. I'm not crazy about putting in numbers on reductions of staff.
Okay.
We have to be careful with that because we're not sure how we're going to end this year and we're not sure where we're going to be next year. This is all on what we think is going to happen. And that's well and good. As we stand today, this is what we think is going to happen, but that may not happen that way. To put these numbers in the newspaper, I think is going to, you know, probably scare a lot of people when it may not be that. I'm not saying it won't be.
Are you referring to the first bullet point?
I'm referring to the, yeah. Well, that's actually two. The first one and the third.
Elimination.
Should we be open to putting the numbers in there if we change the language a little bit? Possibility of up to or something?
Up to, yeah, that could be, yeah.
So, we leave the numbers in there, but there's a, you know, the possibility of up to. So, it's not like.
The potential of up to.
Yeah, absolutely, that's fine.
And that's reality, yeah.
The numbers, the actual numbers are what concerns me. Because like I said, if things don't go, or things go better than we expect.
Yep.
At the end of the year and the numbers for next year, those numbers may not, and then we're going to, people are going to say, why did you say that?
These are worst-case scenario numbers. So, I think.
Well, as of right now.
As of right now.
As of, we're looking right now, if things happen the way we think they're going to happen, yes. But if they don't, what do we do?
Right, right. So, I think, you know. The third bullet says up to now, so it's already couched.
Yep, okay.
And then the first, in the first one, you're saying if we add potential loss?
Yep, potential loss.
Of up to, yeah, I mean, we can tweak that. I don't know if this is, if we would need a motion to make the changes to the letter or if I can.
You can just make an amendment.
Yep.
Yeah, amended.
I would amend to say on bullet point one, the potential loss of.
Okay. Second on the amendment?
Second.
Ms. Barry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That motion passes. We are now, we're back to discussing, we're onto discussing this letter as written with those amendments.
Just one more question. The last line, basically, last line of the letter. I think whoever wrote this, I give them kudos. It was, it's very well-written. It does get to the point. The last line talks about when the students receive the education they deserve, which I strongly agree and I think it should just be period there. I think the rest of that sentence is just assuming, making the assumption that that's it. If question three doesn't pass, this is a one-year deal and I don't think that that's accurate.
Jim, I'm not sure where you're at on the letter.
Yeah.
Is there another page? Oh, I'm sorry. The bottom line on the first page.
Okay.
Bottom line on the first page. On the front page.
Okay, so you're saying end the sentence, receive the education.
End the sentence as the education they deserve for the foreseeable future or if you want to change the language. I just think people might read it as this is a one-year deal if they vote no one through.
Yeah, I mean, we can just take that, the ended it deserve, period. That's the easiest way.
Yep.
Amendment?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right. Any further discussion on the letter as amended?
I'm just assuming that question one is the fire station.
Yes.
Those are two and three.
Yep.
Just to say, I think it's really good.
Yep.
Very well, very well done.
Thank you.
Someone does this for a living.
It shows.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, can we have, I'm going to call for a vote on the letter as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposed? Motion passes. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Leonard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.